Okay, this time I'd like to call the regular session of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting to order. We'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. The meeting is being recorded both audio and video. During the visitors' comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address and will then be given three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the visitors' comments section. In addition, there will be a public comment section after the general manager slash staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on the evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the visitors' comments section. Those attending in person should sign up on the sign up sheet located near the front door or near the entryway. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in the room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only, and we will then determine staff's involvement. Attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman. I'm second district member and board president. Other members of our board and staff include William Johnson, the general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two, and board vice president, Stevie Wakes, senior, first district and board secretary, Brett Parker, third district, Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position number one, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position number three, and Angela Lawson, acting chief counsel. As a reminder, please put your phones on silent. Please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angela, will you please take a roll call, please?
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, are there any additions or or subtractions to the agenda for this evening's meeting?
Move to approve the agenda.
This is Rose, second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. A roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of July third, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I'm of approval, second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of July third, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I'm of approval of the minutes of the regular session of July third.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to say, roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, I'll start with you to see if there's anyone here wishing to speak tonight.
I apologize, I don't know who is here for visitor comments versus speaking on the IRP public comments section.
So I'll first start by asking, Thomas Gordon, are you here for just a general visitor comment section or are you wanting to speak later?
Just for a general comment question.
Okay, if you can come up, state your name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is Thomas Gordon. My address is twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-five, seventeen, North Seventh Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six-six-one-zero-one. I have a general question concerning the massive commercial construction seems to be underway at Eleventh and Minnesota, between Eleventh and Minnesota and Eleventh and State Avenue. My major concern is that several months ago, we spoke about the combined sewer project where that they were going to put in a infrastructure for the water treatment facility to treat the sewage water that was supposed to be coming from the south part of Kansas City. And they said they were going to abandon that idea because it was going to cause too much of a disruption and a concern for the community. So my question to find out, does the BPU have any idea as to what that massive construction project is about on Eleventh and Minnesota, between Minnesota and State Avenue? Can I get a comment for that or just?
Yeah, I'll have to refer to staff, and I'm I'm hearing that there is nothing that we can speak to about that, that that you'd have to go back to the unified government for further comment. That's not, that does not involve BPU.
Okay, the reason I thought it might have had some concern with BPU is because of the the size of the excavation that was taking place and the massive amount of utilities in that particular area. I thought they would have to have some type of response or interaction with them in order to approve such a massive, you know, excavation, that you may have some knowledge of it, maybe not any control of it, but in order to do it, like if I wanted to plant a a tree or dig a foundation, I had to get some type of an approval. And that's a home on the side, but I thought for a commercial that it might be a little bit more hands-on for this particular event.
I'm going to ask staff to come up. Of course, I don't know of any, I guess the question I would ask is there any coordination between BPU and the unified government on the project that I'm hearing about?
So it's a unified government sewer project. We have had to go out and locate some of our utilities, make sure it's not in conflict, but we haven't had any part of any of the excavator or any work we've had to do as a result of their project.
Do you know any anything about the project?
I I do not, other than it's sewer sanitary upgrades.
Who who can I contact to get more information?
Public Works, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay, thank you.
Let me ask, if I can, while you're up, do we, do we have to approve, like if the UG is doing a dig, do they come through us? I mean, do they come through and get a clearance? I mean, I guess to Mr. Gordon's question, you know, they always have, like if you're digging to plant, so do we have to approve any such projects through the UG or can they move on their own motion?
We don't have, since we don't have anything to do with the sanitary sewer stormwater, that's all their projects. We we don't have any influence over what they approve or spend or do. Sometimes we do have things that are in conflict that we may have to coordinate with them on moving within the right of way or relocating some poles or moving a water service or water main or something like that. But that's generally the only coordination we have with them. Is if we have utilities that are in conflict of each other's project.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you. All right, the next is Sylvia Watson. So is this a general comment section or is it?
This is a question.
Okay.
That I have. My name is Sylvia Watson. My address is fourteen, eighteen Walker Avenue. That's Kansas City, Kansas, six-six-one-zero-four. I have a question about, and I'm sure you guys have been bombarded with this, been bombarded with the same questions about the pilot that's on the BPU bill. This is my first time being in this room. And we have a lot of seniors in Wyandotte County that are on fixed incomes. The rates go up with the BPU and then the pilot. When I first came in this room, my eyes went to that mission statement, to focus on the needs of our customers to improve the quality of life in our community while promoting self-reliable and sustainable utilities. The charges on BPU and everything, it doesn't go with that mission statement. They're opposite because it you you don't, it appears to me that you don't care about the community. BPU with the rates going up, the senior citizens, we're on fixed incomes and things constantly goes up, our utility bills continue to go up. So when I look at that mission statement, it seems like it's an offset, it doesn't go.
So, Ms. Watson, do you care if I comment or?
Okay, and the question is, is there, are we any closer to having the pilot, the pilot removed from the bill or is that still ongoing?
I'm taking initials. This Watson, I've known Ms. Watson for many, many years, and I appreciate her advocacy. And and her concern, appreciate you being here. Now, the final word on what I'm going to say will be had by our general manager, Mr. Johnson. So I'm just going to say from the standpoint of an advocacy that what you're speaking to specifically Sylvia, Ms. Watson, is the pilot, the the payment in lieu of taxes. The BPU is only a collector of the pilot. It's coming from the unified government. By the way, it's higher, the pilot, its percentage is higher than other pilots from other utilities, but that's a separate issue. What you're talking about and what I'm concerned about, and I think most of the members of this board is safe to say, is that we're only the collector, the pilot's a tax, it's a payment in lieu of taxes, but it's a tax. And it's a tax that's coming on us, on our bill, your utility bill, that we have to collect. We we've got to collect it. We're not assessing it. I can honestly say that if it were left to me, the pilot would be gone. If it were left, I can't speak for the whole board, we would not be charging that. And there's some other fees too. For example, the trash collection fee, there's a tax on their trash collection, stormwater, wastewater. Those are all coming from the unified government. They set it and they make us, I'm out of time. They set it and they and they and they make us collect it, and it makes us look bad. Now, we try, we're trying to get the bill bifurcated, or we're trying to get two bills. We're in dialogue with the commission because the commission has to approve that. That would show that those fees, like the pilot that the UG is putting on each of us, each of our bills, would not lead to having to be collected, that could lead to some problems like, not collection being disconnection, disconnection or some other penalty. So I just, again, I know I'm not making it clear, but it's not us. We're 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 not, we're only the the tax collector for the UG. We need to continue to share with our commissioners and with the mayor that the BPU should not be held as responsible for the collection of that fee.
Okay, but you said.
That was three minutes.
That was in lieu of taxes. So if it wasn't taxes, it's going to be something else. Let's just call it what it is. It's either going to be this in lieu of taxes or it's going to be another taxes that the citizens of Wyandotte County is going to be bombarded with. We, let's just be honest and call it what it is. You know, that's a good name of saying in lieu of taxes, but it's still taxes. We're still being charged for it. So I and I don't understand.
That was three minutes.
I'm sorry.
That was time.
But I will enlarge your time for a second because. No, no, go ahead, go ahead, I hear you.
Okay. Okay. Senior moment here.
No, no.
Senior moment. So so basically what I'm saying, if it if it's not that, it's going to be something else because it seems like we're the poorest county, but we're always being charged with these taxes and everything, and something needs to be done about it because a lot of us are just stuck here. You know, we would be getting the heck out of Dodge with everything that's going on, but a lot of us are just stuck here. And it's mostly the seniors.
So I pardon me for interrupting, but let me say, and because Mr. Johnson has a comment. Let's take this energy as well to the Unified Government Commission and address them during their times on Thursday evening, during that area where we can speak, because they are the ones wholly responsible for this anomaly and that we're having to collect these taxes here through the utility. They're the ones that are creating the situation. We're only the ones who have to implement it because the BPU is a subsidiary of the unified government, and they're putting that on us. So please, ma'am, if you would consider, let us, let us take these concerns, continue to take these concerns to the UG and to the commission meeting that's held on Thursday nights. And I know Mr. Johnson wanted to say something, I appreciate your patience.
Well, I was going to say something, but David spoke to almost everything that I was going to state, okay? Yeah, I would I would echo what he said, and there's nothing that he said that I disagree with. This board has asked me to work with the unified government about separating all the charges off the bills. So there's really only two charges or charges that come from, that's on the bill that goes back to utility operators. One is the base charge, and then there's two electric riders, and then there's a water charge. Okay, the rest of the bill, the rest of the charges on the bill are charges that BPU is not directly responsible for. We have no responsibility over that. Those are unified government charges that's been placed on our bill that we collect and pass through. The pilot, as as our board member Haley has said, is about twice the national average. Last July, this board as a group met with the commissioners as a group, and we went through all that, and that information is still out there. On, here is what the, here's what BPU was confronted with on an ongoing basis in having to carry all these charges and also having to defend this in the public when the unified government is not providing the level of service necessary and are not really speaking to this as much as we think that they should. So it's, you know, I have, I have worked as about as far as I could could. So I turned it back over to our elected officials and say this is a problem that needs to be settled at that level.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Next is a Bobby. Okay, so is this a general comment statement or is it?
It's a common statement with the customer service.
Okay, so if you can state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Bobby Joseph Burger, twenty-seven hundred Waverly Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. I have a patient that is on twenty-four hour, I'm here scared different. He got this yesterday, but you sent it out on the twelfth. And his lights do not need to go off. He has Alzheimer's dementia, and we come up here today because we called all day yesterday. We come up to today, the police officer let us in, and he wants us to get on the kiosk. For what? He don't have five hundred dollars. He's on a base income, but he's willing to pay this five hundred dollar deposit, but we need to get in touch with the customer service. I don't have no phone that taps into no appointment schedule to give him. I keep getting caught up with the three-one-one water for somebody, and it's only electricity.
Yeah.
So I just need the customer services to just give me an appointment.
Okay, so I will, I will give you an appointment today. Yes, I will. But I would also say, Janata Hanson is our customer service executive director. If you get with her, I will ask her about, I will ask her to follow up with me. Yes, we will make make an appointment for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me say to you, not just to you, Ms. Joseph, but everybody, I continue to have the concern as the manager and the board knows that we don't have inaccessible lobby. They put in that somebody could come to the lobby. That has been a big point of mine, so that someone who's having the issue that you and or your client are having could walk up to the lobby during reasonable hours, as far as I'm concerned, up to seven o'clock at night, like we had prior to COVID, and be able to access and have addressed an issue like that without going through the rigmarole and the hoops that cannot be met on the telephone, as we've seen. I've suggested this and will continue to suggest it. I look forward to our budget process to include that expansion, that we do have direct access for clients to ratepayers that need to have that access and have been unable to get it. You may have to, you may have to, but you ought to be able to have a discussion with somebody about what has to be done with a human, with a real interactive opportunity prior to disconnection. I understand. All right, thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Yeah, when unless he's giving you written authorization, he would have to also be present when when you meet with customer service on that appointment. Yes, well, not this meeting, when you meet with our our, right. And then make sure he's available too, because we need to make sure that he's authorizing you to be able to speak on his behalf, right? Next, Sarah Lynch. Sarah, is this about just general comments or is it about the? Okay, so if you can state your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Sarah Lynch, Wyandotte resident. Two parts here. First part, it's making the rounds that come the fall, we will be having a new GM on the board. And although I'm sure, Mr. Johnson, that you'll receive quite the send off that still leaves a vacancy on this board. So my first question is, how does the public get a seat at the table in terms of picking the next GM? The second comment is more of an urging than anything, as well as maybe, you know, what what's been updated. Considering that this hurricane season, this rainy season over the summer is quickly becoming unpredictable and is setting us up for some extreme highs and lows in the coming summer and winter. I, it's in the forefront of our minds what to do about the devices that keep people alive. I know you guys haven't heard this in a while, but there are still many devices that are not covered by your emergency devices list that should be, such as various things to help people's heart, breathing machines and so on, as well as the hot and cold weather rolls. So I'm I'm asking what, have you guys been working on that? Has anything been done? What can we do to get that moving forward so that our community stays safe in the coming climates ahead?
So first, and I will say this, I am a staff person under contract at the BPU. I'm not a board member, so. Okay, so, yes, I will do plan on leaving here after many years of working for this utility and certainly is thankful for all that has been provided to me and and all the opportunity given to me to try to make improvements where needed, okay? I would also say, you know, we're well aware of things that are, that happens on hottest days and coldest days of the month, and we try to make sure that our service does not suffer and that then that we're continuing to provide reliable electric and water service to the community. And we are there doing almost all emergencies as quickly as we can, when we can, to make sure that the public benefits from from our style. In terms of the medical alert stuff, ironically, we just had that conversation, was it this week? This week, and yeah, what I've asked the board is allow us time to at least put some technology in so it don't become an overburden for staff to managing more types of equipment. I think we're there, so we still have to work that, work out some back office processes. But but we'll be having a conversation with the board as to here's what we are looking at, and here's a top line for it.
Okay, that's much appreciated. Thank you.
Let me just say something to you, right, the general manager that you mentioned about public. You mentioned about the public being involved in this, in the in the search. It is, it is our hope and as in in this democratic society that you have put your trust in the people you elected to the to this board, that we will listen to your concerns and that we will implement those concerns when we choose the general manager to come. It is our hope that you would hold us accountable for the general ministry that we choose to serve the Board of Public Utilities and the citizens of Wyandotte County. That is our hope, and hopefully that you're expressing your concerns to your board members, making sure that your your concerns are heard, that the general manager that we choose will meet those expectations that you have for the new general manager.
You know, we won't.
That they will be as good as Bill Johnson.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Lynch, let me add, let me add this too. So I I just, I think, I think an important thing that I left out early on the medical equipment, life support equipment, just like every utility in the United States, we do have a program, every one that I know about, okay, we do have a program, okay? But that that program is basically designed to assist people that do have these life-saving needs or pieces of equipment that that help them live a, some type of quality of life or extend their life. But, I mean, all of us are providing a service, and that service is not free. Okay, so and I'm I'm saying that to say we are sensitive to the needs of our community, okay? With their program, what we do is basically extend time for people on that list to be able to pay. And BPU also has a number of programs in place to where we provide utility assistance for in excess of what you would find at other utilities. So now, and we do communicate that to say, hey, there's programs out here, there's agencies out here that help people when they run into either hardship programs or other or the hardship problems or other problems to where you can get assistance to help pay your bill. But, you know, through all, throughout all that, we we are and will be looking at some additional piece of equipment. But at the end of the day, once we extend that courtesy, once we extend the time and get people either the either the assistance or give them time to pay their bills or put them on a payment arrangement or some take a, take advantage of some of the other things that we offer, at the point, at some point, those bills does need to be paid.
Respectfully, it's not just a matter of paying the bills, but that's a conversation that's much longer than three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ty Gorman, is this general or is this something that?
I was hoping to just take a couple of examples.
You will, you will.
Ty Gorman, two-eight-four-three, Parkwood Boulevard, six-six-one-zero-four, KCK. Yeah, just wanted to mix it up here and spend some time thanking BPU. Met with a lot of the staff earlier in the week or last week and and got to go over a lot of the current and aspirational programs that have been put together to help people. And I just wanted to say that since since the people during the last rate case came and showed up in many in numbers and said what they needed and demanded what was necessary, and since the new board members got elected, there've been, there's been a lot of good movement. I think, you know, customer service and assistance programs have been looked at. A lot of work has gone into improving them. I've heard Rose mostly on the on the on the internet calls, working on that. I think I think Mary is with the with the group of citizens who meet quarterly to try to improve programs. to try to improve programs in BPU. Efficiency programs expanding. I hope we can get that phone number and email out there to get the efficiency programs that BPU currently offers available and so that more people in the community know about them. And then put more investment and attention on it as more federal dollars come in. I think the staff expressed a strong desire and, and, and plan to, to do that and to move forward with community solar, when possible, to help lower bills that way, to look for ways to lower bills for people and fixed fees for people in the future with, with federal dollars and, and new programs that are available. And, and I think, you know, the hearing today that the medical equipment issue, which has been, I think looming in my mind for a few years now, is getting movement and I'm, I'm looking, looking for a way to make sure that there's resilience. Hopefully, in the future, battery resilience in homes to make sure that people's medical equipment isn't threatened by the power bill or fluctuations that can be facilitated by BPU. But that program to keep people that are the most vulnerable in our community safe, both, you know, seniors and for medical equipment, I think, is, is, is heartening and I hope to see more and more attention on that. And the, so the, so just wanted to say the, the, the direction I see BPU going since the last election is, is an upward trajectory and and, and do look forward to the, the process of the Integrated Resource Plan and the, the, the public process being open and, and accountable and, and for the GM. So, so just wanted to come up and say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's time.
Next, this person signed up to speak is Anna Barber. You can come up, state your name, address for the record and, you know, three minutes.
My name is Anna Barber and I live at nineteen seventeen North Fourteenth Street, six six one zero one, four, lived in six six one zero one so long. Okay. My question is, I haven't needed to use the kiosk downstairs to pay my bill in a while. But the last time I was here, elderly gentleman in a wheelchair that I helped let through the door did not know that he could not get change back when he paid his bill. Now, I haven't had to use the kiosk in a while. So is that still the case that when you pay your bill, you can't get change back? For instance, say, for instance, his bill was ten dollars and he only had a twenty dollar bill. And the ten dollars change that he should get was credited to his next bill. And so he couldn't pay his bill because he could not be without his change. So is there, can you get change back now out of that kiosk? And when are you all going to open the lobby back up?
So I will, I will have Jeanette to talk about the kiosk.
And that is correct. The kiosk machine does not give change back whatever the money is put in. It would be credited to the bill, but it does, the, the machine does not give change back. So if the bill was ten dollars and a person only had twenty, the twenty dollars would be applied to the bill. The rest would be goes credit toward the next bill. Otherwise, I would have to bring in change.
Do the instructions say that change will not be provided?
I haven't looked at it in a while, so I'm, I'm not going to say that I can say that right now, but I am almost sure that it does. It says the machine does not give change. And that's probably why that was known, was it probably said on there that it didn't give change back? And so that is something that that machine just does not allow.
Jeanette, is that all of our kiosks are just the one down?
It is on all of the kiosks. That's just a feature of the machine. Yes, ma'am.
That was a rhetorical question. I, I have used the kiosk and it does say you cannot get change back.
It does say, okay, and that's what I'm saying. I haven't, I haven't looked at that, but I'm, I'm almost absolutely sure that all of them say that you do not receive change back. And maybe this customer had not used that before. But I, I am looking into that and always have open conversation and dialogue with them to see if maybe that's a possibility. But it's just a receptacle in there that takes in money, but it cannot get back anyway.
So is that message, and I haven't looked at it, is that message part of the screen that they use or is that something posted outside the kiosk?
I'm not sure whether it is or not, but prior to a person putting their money in that they are given that, that information.
Okay, so the, the machine itself lets them know that.
And I, I don't know if we have signs out there. We, we post various signs. We try to take some down because it just seems to be overload to our customers when they said there are so many signs out there saying things. So we've let the screen provide some information. But that, that is just a limitation of that machine.
Is there a best alternative for someone in that scenario, right? If they have twenty dollars in cash to pay a ten dollar bill? If, if they're hesitant to put all twenty in the machine, is what would the next best way for them to be to get their bill paid?
Other than, other than maybe have to, since we have a very close store that is across the street now, I've had people that have just gone to the store and said that, you know, if they called, the representative spoke with them and they say, unfortunately, it doesn't give back machine, give back change, but there is a store across the street. And we've had people at the store, prior to that, it was the gas station. So we've tried to provide some things since now that you cannot get change back. And again, that can, is something that we have a ongoing conversation with the machines is that maybe it possibly in the future be a machine that is paying and receiving.
Thank you.
And to that note, we did have a conversation with the store across the street about placing the kiosk inside and I think that, at the Mert, I think the United States government still owns that, don't they?
Well, we subsidized it.
Okay, they're subsidized. Okay, all right. So, so our answer was no, I think they didn't.
At that time, they weren't interested in using it. And most of our machines, because we don't normally have this issue, most of our machines are in stores. And so customers normally just utilize being able to use that store. So that's why I said the store across the street. But most of the, the machines we have are, you know, henhouse price chopper, sun fresh. There, most of them are in stores and they will provide that change.
So will they have machines that give change? Can, I mean, are there, aren't there, are there any upgrade possibilities?
That's why I said I can have, I, I speak with them.
I don't, I'm not talking about the one that they pay you, but decided if you, if you're, there's a machine that you can put a twenty dollar bill in and it give you ten and two fives back or ten and five ones, ten ones?
I can look into that. There, there, we have machines, but I'm not sure that we have machines other than here in the utility that give anything out but breaking a dollar. I know putting in a five dollar bill, I would know because I got all quarters back. So we don't have anything like that present in this utility, but maybe there is a machine that I can look into that's different from the change machine that we currently have. But I will take all of that and get that information.
Can I ask an, an alternate question still on that line? So we can, we accept overpayment and we apply it to the next bill. I appreciate and understand. That's Ms. Barber's question. Do we still have a corresponding penalty though for an underpayment? In other words, if this gentleman came in and did not pay or he underpaid by fifty cents, a dollar, five dollars, what the bill is that was due, there'll still be the corresponding penalty as if he had not paid anything. You still have those penalties in place?
There's a late payment charge if it's not paid on or before the due date.
So if he didn't put that second bill in or second amount in, that's going to make an overpayment on his half. He's still going to be unduly penalized if he's under the amount this due.
There's a late payment charge if it's not, the full amount is not paid on the due date.
No matter how little that is, or how much that is, even by a dollar, just, just asking for a friend. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Henson, Ms. Barber.
Thank you. Rob, is there anyone online?
Brittany Q, I'm enabling your ability to speak now. You'll need to unmute.
Hello.
Brittany, this is BPU. Can you state your name, address for the record and you have three minutes to address the board?
Yeah, so my name is Brittany Quintana and I'm a Wyandotte County resident and I just wanted to touch base on payment arrangements. So currently we're unable to make pay arrangements on the same day that service is scheduled to be disconnected and also unable to make a payment arrangement to be restored. If making a payment arrange, if making a payment will cancel the disconnect and or restore services, we should also have the ability to make payment arrangements to get the same results. Currently, the calculations on the payment arrangements are one-sixth of your total bill. Plus, you have to pay future bills in full each month. That amount can easily be unattainable and cause your service to be disconnected. So I feel we need a better calculation system for payment arrangements. Also, to make a payment online, you have to enter your full name exactly how it appears on your bill, like first, last name, account number and last four of social should be sufficient without the system being so specific about the nick, like middle name or middle initial or suffix prefix. That shouldn't really interfere with locating my account to make an online payment. Getting this resolved is what caused the delay to my payment being made before it's being disconnected.
Okay. I'm not in a position to, we will have our customer service employee come back up to the mic.
So to address the, the name situation, then our new customer service portal does state that you have to put in your name exactly like it is on the bill. So it's, it, you receive the bill or you get an e-bill, but it has your name as you were signed for service and it does require that. And so we do have, we do have to use that to get into the system. And that again, is just a feature of the system. On payment arrangements, is there a question?
I was just gonna say, however, it does allow you to just make a payment online without going through the process of signing up for the, the thing. Is that correct?
Yes, it does.
Right. This is just, it requires your exact, as it appears on the bill. So like me, I, I didn't even look at my bill. I was just, I tried to enter my first and last name. That wasn't good enough. So I couldn't figure out how to just log in or how to actually pay.
I believe you can pay with your account number without using your name.
Yes, you have to, you have to use your name.
Yeah.
Yes, you do have to use your name, put it in. And that, that's the name that you signed up for service with.
Jeanette, can you please go through the order or what she's talking about, what has to go in first, what goes in second?
It, it would be the name first and then you can use the account number.
All right, so.
Or use a name.
Is the reason why the names have to be accurate, is that for security reasons?
Well, that, that is just the, the system, the way you're signed up for service, wherever, however you, now, if you did not use that, if somebody just used their first and their last name when they signed for service. But most of the time, when you sign for service and you provide your information, all of your information, whether it's a lease agreement or whether it's your closing statement, it has that information on it. So we sign you up exactly how you have the service at that address. And that is what, that's what we have.
So why can't anybody pay the bill for that? I mean, if somebody wants to pay a bill that's not in their name, which could happen, wouldn't we accept that? Or wouldn't, why, I mean, why is that not the case? You know, that, you know, if somebody were going to pay on behalf of someone else and didn't have that information.
They would need to have that information. In order to access someone's account, we wouldn't want someone to just be able to go in and just access someone else's account that's not their own account. If someone gives you authorization to do that, then they would be able to tell you exactly how you needed to sign up, exactly how it was on their bill.
I mean, to pay something on that bill, not to access the account, but to pay something on that particular bill.
Pay something on that bill.
A third party, if a third party.
Online. Like if you were to pay someone else's, on someone else's account, in order to do that, you would have to have their information. You cannot just go in. Now, if you, if you're, if someone is paying someone's bill and they want to provide the name and the address and they use a money order or a check that, that you can always drop it in the night drop, we can take the information of the bill that you want to pay, but that provides access to the account and you have to have that information for that person because it's going to go directly to their account.
That makes sense. But can we touch base on the arrangements and if we can get a different calculation system?
We are, we are over the three minutes.
So that's why I asked earlier about the security protocol. So if somebody don't enter their name correctly, we certainly don't want any, any under, other account to be open and give them access to that because of a, of a typo or of a character being left out or something like that. So maybe this is customer information that we try to make sure that we're protecting on behalf of the customers. All right, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry. Jeanette, I did not have a question for you. I just wanted to, Ms. Brittany?
Yes.
This is Rose Mulvaney Henry. I'm a board member. I'm going to give you my email address. It's rhenry@bpu.com.
Okay.
If you can email me a contact number for you. I'd like to visit with you a little bit more about this issue as we work through the customer service policies, if that's okay.
Of course, rhenry@bpu.com.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, is there anyone else? Dr. Hall, if you can unmute, state your name, address for the record and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Alma, Dr. Alma Rosas Hall. I live in Kansas City, Kansas. Real quick, I just want to say thank you to the staff and Mr. Bill Johnson for meeting with me this week. As I'm listening to this meeting and I'm coming in a little late, I was also helping another. I'm noticing the same trend that are the basic is that we need maybe if the board and the leadership of BPU could bring up to the table and consider opening the lobby for at least two days a week for, I don't know how many hours, but obviously there is a need there. Because of the machines, they need exact change. Or if they don't give enough change, then the disconnection could happen. Those are things that I'm noticing every time I meet with a family. Another thing that I would suggest, based on what I'm finding, is that if we could get some type of flyer translated to our community, some of the community, what do you call, centers? Where our families can see that, hey, the flex pay is this, this is how it looks like, this is how it is. We also need to remember that we do have a, a high diverse community and new Americans coming in. So technology may not be new to them. So we got to go back into teaching what are expectations here in our, in our community. So with, with that issue, a simple solution would be maybe if we could just open the lobby to two days a week. It is very difficult for our community to take two day, a, a day off work and come and meet. Obviously, it takes a lot of planning and sometimes things happen. It is hard. So maybe just offering that, if you guys could just bring it to the table, that would be an easy solution. I know it's something that it may not be in the plans, but it would help a lot of our community, especially the community that I advocate for. That's all I'm asking and I do appreciate all of you for always taking the time to at least hear me out and, and help me with those concerns.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Rob, is there anyone else? Thank you. So we'll move, we'll close the visitor comment section on the agenda and move into the general manager staff reports. As we continue having a conversation about the IRP with our board, the next topic is our IRP summaries. I'll ask Black and Beach, our consultants to come up and you can, I mean, now we're in.
Chuck now, button here. This button here moves you forward, this moves you back.
Okay, thank you very much.
Laser pointer, pointer at the top of you.
Chuck, now you, we're in a, in what we call our general session. So if you can introduce yourself again for the public.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Chuck Poston. I'm an engineer with Black and Beach. Our firm is working with BPU and its staff in the 2024 Integrated Resource Plan. Tonight, we have a, a short agenda to talk about the updates we have to the IRP process. We'll do a, a short review of what an IRP is and why we do it, including our assessment of need. We'll give a update on modeling results, including initial expansion planning results from our computer modeling. We'll do a summary of public comments received to date. Uh, we'll do a summary of public comments received to date. Talk about our next steps, uh, and then the remaining project schedule. So for the benefit of those in attendance and those participating virtually, we'll take a few minutes and. Talk about what an IRP is. At its simplest, an IRP is a study that looks at how BPU can service customers' electricity needs in the future. And to do so in a way, uh, that promotes reliability, affordability and sustainability. The IRP team with the BPU staff has been working with Black and Beach. And we've developed ten scenarios to test and evaluate a range of possible futures. That could impact future resource planning decisions. Uh, we're using a computer modeling software called Plexos. To produce a portfolio of generating resources. That are best suited to each scenario's specific inputs and assumptions. The integrated planning or integrated resource planning process is a continual process. And new IRP studies are completed every five years. Each fi- every five years, updated market conditions and forecasts are included in the new iteration of the IRP. So that new and updated conclusions can be drawn and new action plans can be made. As conditions change internally to BPU. Within the larger energy market and also in the, uh, rules and regulations that impact power plant operation. It is important to evaluate a range of different scenarios to help ensure that, uh. Planning decisions will be applicable to the widest range of future outcomes. Um, as we said, the IRP is a continuous process. Uh, it enables BPU to take steps today. In the form of action plans to continue to enhance reliability and affordability. Uh, while addressing environmental compliance and managing risk for its customers. The IRP process regards balancing a lot of different, uh, value and cost drivers. Uh, to develop that long-term strategy. And, um, as those different needs and objectives, uh, are considered. That's what feeds into our action plans, uh, based on the results and insights from the, uh, the IRP process. Um, among the planning objectives that are represented in the IRP are system reliability. Minimization of rate impacts. Uh, environmental stewardship and compliance with all applicable regulations from the energy market. Uh, one of the first and most critical items to be examined in this process was. An assessment of current, uh, generation, uh, resources and look at future energy needs. Oh. Uh, BPU meets its load through, uh, generation from its own, uh, power plants, its own resources. And from purchase power contracts and also through, uh, energy purchases from, uh, the broader market. Currently, BPU has a diverse portfolio of thermal resources. Um, and by thermal, I mean, uh, power plants that burn some form of fuel. Again, it, current resources, um, that includes coal, natural gas, uh, and oil primarily. Uh, in addition, uh, there are purchase power contracts that BPU has entered into. That represent, uh, substantial amounts of renewable energy, uh, from a combination of wind, hydro and solar resources. Um, in the future, consideration must be given to the expiration of some of these contracts. And the potential retirement of the existing fossil fuel, uh, fired power plants. As these existing, uh, generation resources, uh, are decommissioned or the contracts expire. New sources of energy will have to be acquired. On the flip side of the coin, um, looking at energy supply, we also have energy demand. That is the, the man from BPU's customers and their need for energy. And as a part of the IRP process, uh, a load forecast was made. And that forecast anticipates, uh, modest growth over the twenty-year planning horizon. This forecast includes both annual energy amounts, the total amount of energy customers will demand. Uh, over the course of a year and, uh, peak demand, which is again, the, the maximum amount of energy at any one time that customers. Uh, require on the system. Both these aspects of customer load are needs that have to be met by BPU. But within the IRP process, uh, I'd like to talk a little bit more about the, the peak demand. Uh, because that peak demand is an important input into the IRP. Uh, modeling, because that is used when calculating, um. Capacity reserve margin within, uh, the Southwest Power Pool or SPP. What we have on this slide is an example of what we call firm capacity needs. And, um, I apologize to some of the board members, I know you've heard this from me, uh, I think several times now, but. Um, never hurts to go over it again. Um, BPU, like other load serving entities and SPP, has to maintain. Uh, certain level of generating capacity above and beyond the peak energy demands from their customers. Uh, currently, that margin is set at fifteen percent. Um, so for example, if, uh, peak energy demand in a system was one hundred megawatts. SPP would require that a hundred and fifteen megawatts of, uh, firm capacity be available to, to meet that need. This slide is an example of a spreadsheet analysis that was an early part of the IRP. And this is specifically for, uh, the base case scenario. But as a generic example, we can see that, um. During the planning period, some of the existing purchase power contracts are anticipated to expire. And as those contracts expire, uh, the amount of firm capacity available on the system decreases. And eventually there is a deficit, uh, that appears. Um, you look at the chart at the bottom of the slide, you can see that that deficit is relatively small in the near to medium term. But starting in twenty thirty-eight, uh, with the expiration of the Cimarron Bend Wind Contract, we see a, a jump. Uh, in the need for firm capacity. At that point in the, uh, projected future, we would anticipate the need for, uh, new resources to meet some of BPU's needs. Uh, any questions from the board at this point? Okay. So next we'll move on to our modeling results update. The last time we spoke on July third, uh, good deal of time was spent discussing the inputs to, uh, scenario one or the base case. Uh, that included, uh, quite a bit of discussion on the different expansion candidates, uh, included in the model. Uh, the capital costs associated with those different technologies. And also, uh, just as we talked about, uh, on the previous slide, uh, firm capacity requirements. Today, in this presentation, uh, we want to present our initial results from scenarios five, six, seven and eight. These scenarios are probably the most similar to the base case. Um, and are most, um. Uh, similar both in inputs and in, uh, results as well. So, a quick overview of scenarios five through eight. Overall, we want to look at these as, uh, sensitivities. The base case was created as a, um, status quo scenario where we looked at. Uh, operation of the system with, uh, few changes to, uh, current operating conditions. Beyond the base case, we wanted to see how changes to inputs could affect the, uh, planned expansion as part of the IRP. But, uh, these scenarios include inputs that are the same as the base case, except for the changes noted here on this slide. Um, we limited the changes, again, we want to, uh, not change too many variables at one time. And we can see the impact of these various, uh, input alterations, uh, more or less in isolation. Uh, scenario five is our high fuel price sensitivity. Uh, there, we looked at, uh, what would be the impact of higher fuel prices. Uh, experienced by BPU and the Southwest Power Pool, uh, at large. Scenario six is the corresponding low fuel price sensitivity. Um, again, fuel prices and market prices being updated. Uh, scenario seven is a high load growth sensitivity where the load forecast. Both the, uh, annual energy and peak energy values were updated to be a little more aggressive. With a, a higher or faster growth in customer load. And scenario eight, um, again, sorry, some of the, the base case, except for the fact that the assumed. SPP planning reserve margin, uh, was increased. All the capital costs and new resource options, uh, we discussed for the base case remain the same for these scenarios. And again, we run these just to see what the impacts to the, uh, results will be. Okay. So. Scenarios five and six, uh, we'll talk about together, these are the fuel price sensitivities. Prices for commodities such as coal, oil and natural gas can be influenced by a lot of factors outside of the control of BPU. Uh, to account for these uncertainties, um, high and low values, uh, based on the, the base case forecasts were generated. Uh, these different sets of fuel prices were then fed back into the model, uh, to perform this sensitivity testing. Uh, fuel prices were adjusted by assuming a, a year-over-year price difference of ten percent, either over or under. What was assumed for the base case. Also for scenarios five and six, um. Changes were made to the SPP market price forecast in the model. This was done because we don't want to assume that any fuel price changes would be BPU specific, but would affect all. Of the utilities and SPP as well. And so higher prices for fuel will result in higher prices in the market. Likewise, uh, anticipated lower price should bring prices down. Changes in those market-wide energy prices can impact how existing power plants are dispatched. And, uh, the revenues that power plants can generate as well. Uh, scenario seven, the high load growth sensitivity. Uh, again, the, the load forecast was modified to provide a more aggressive outlook, uh, on load growth. Uh, higher peak load growth will result in higher, greater needs for firm capacity, uh, in the future. No additional, uh, low, low growth scenario was used, uh, primarily because the base case already is. Uh, has a, a relatively low, low growth forecast. The forecasted year-over-year growth for this scenario is assumed to be fifty percent higher than in the base case. Uh, but again, keep in mind, while, while it is a, a large percentage increase, the low growth itself was small to begin with, so. Scenario eight, the high reserve requirement sensitivity. Um, here, the only change is again, is in that reserve planning requirement. Um, within the base case, we talked about earlier, the current SPP planning reserve requirement is fifteen percent. And the base case assumes that to be constant through the end of the planning period. For scenario eight, uh, the planning reserve requirement increases to eighteen percent in twenty thirty-one. And to twenty percent in twenty thirty-seven. The increase in this planning reserve, uh, requirement will result in greater needs for firm capacity in the future. There have been recent changes within SPP, uh, on this, uh. Uh, planning reserve margin in twenty twenty-three, uh, it increased from twelve percent to fifteen percent where it is now. Uh, and this affects, again, other load serving entities and SPP, not just, uh, BPU. Uh, so this scenario contemplates a future in which SPP would further increase that requirement in the future. So, all of that was to get us to the initial expansion planning results. Um, for these, uh, four additional scenarios. As a quick review, we'll look at scenario one, the base case, which we looked at in our last meeting. In the near to medium term, the small amounts of firm capacity needs. Uh, could be met with limited amounts of purchase capacity. Uh, again, those are, you know, bilateral agreements between market participants. Uh, that would transfer the rights for, you know, a set amount of, uh, capacity for a given time at a given price. Starting twenty twen- uh, twenty thirty-eight, uh, the increased firm capacity needs. Exceed the limits we've placed on, uh, the model for the amount of, uh, capacity purchases that can be made. And that results in the addition of, uh, solar generation resources. Uh, I will point out here that these graphs on the following slides are given in terms of firm capacity. Uh, we talked, I think, last time about, um, effective load carrying capacity ELCC. And, uh, these, uh, capacities shown on these charts have been, uh, modified to show just the firm capacity portion. So, um. In this, you can see by twenty forty-three, uh, this graph shows about forty megawatts of firm capacity from solar. Um, well, that's, uh, the firm capacity part of a total of seventy five, seventy-five megawatts. Of capacity, uh, added to the model. But again, it's reduced by that, uh, ELCC value. So, that's the base case. For scenario five, the, the high fuel price sensitivity, very similar to the base case. Purchase capacity is used to meet needs until twenty thirty-eight, at which point solar is, uh, chosen by the model as the best option. Uh, and again, uh, the same amount of solar is eventually added, total of seventy-five megawatts by twenty forty-three. Uh, scenario six, again, very similar results, uh, both to the base case and to the high fuel price sensitivity. Purchase capacity until, uh, twenty thirty-eight is sufficient, at which point solar capacity is added to meet those needs. Scenario seven, the high load growth sensitivity. Again, the accelerated growth, growth in peak demand causes a corresponding growth in firm capacity needs. Here, the SPP planning reserve requirement is assumed to be the same as in the base case, which is equal to that fifteen percent above peak demand. And so, the results again are similar, um, to the base case where purchase capacity needs cover, um, BPU until twenty thirty-eight. At which point, uh, solar generation, uh, is added. Scenario eight is probably the most different, uh, out of this selection of scenarios from the base case. And this is the high reserve requirement sensitivity. Again, this is where, uh, we assume SPP, uh, increases the planning reserve margin, uh, from the base case assumption of fifteen percent. Uh, it, it steps up over the planning horizon to a total of twenty percent. Increasing that margin creates an earlier need, uh, in the planning horizon to, uh, add solar generation. So instead of twenty thirty-eight where solar starts to be added, it starts to add solar, uh, as early as twenty thirty-two. And again, we can see on this graph that not only is the solar added earlier, but more solar capacity is added, uh, in total. Uh, in the base case, a total of seventy-five megawatts of, uh, total capacity is built. Uh, where in this case, it, uh, builds a total of a hundred and twenty-five megawatts by, uh, twenty forty-three. Questions about any of the, uh, scenario results?
I just, I think I know the answer to this, but just for clarity's sake, on, on each of these scenarios, when there's really a. Uh, significant new requirements, when capacity goes up. Uh, at the end of the day, it looks like most of that is covered with solar, so. at the end of the day, it looks like most of that is covered with solar. So all of that is just market-driven, right? It's not within a green energy goal. It is just the prices dictate that expanding solar, when we get to that point, looks to be the most cost-effective solution for the ratepayers of the utility.
That's correct. The model does not have, in these scenarios, any mandate for green energy or emissions targets. And so it will build what it believes to be most economic.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on from these results and talk briefly about the public comments that have been provided to date. So about a month ago, BPU staff sent out a, an IRP-related questionnaire to the twenty largest customers. From those twenty questionnaires, sent out two responses have been received. These corporate, large corporate-class customers expressed interest in this questionnaire in the possible addition of new renewable energy resources. And they also indicated they'd be interested in a continued dialogue with BPU regarding long-term participation in the Green Rider program. There was also a set of comments from the Sierra Club that has been received. They contained a number of recommendations, just a few of those here, looking at potentially going to annual IRP updates instead of the current five-year cycle. The sharing of IRP modeling details with outside organizations so that they could perform their own analyses. And an emphasis on operating Nierman One in a way to limit losses and then to retire the coal-fired plant as soon as it's in the best interest of customers. At this time, no additional public comments have been received. So for our next steps, there's going to be continued collaboration between Black and Beach and the BPU staff to address the remaining sensitivity scenarios. We intend to remain in regular contact with the board throughout the summer to discuss our progress and results. We're still targeting approval of the IRP by August twenty-first. And here, it would be, I think, good to remind folks that public comments are still welcome for the IRP process. Those comments can be submitted by email, IRP at BPU dot com. And we'd ask that those comments be made on or before August the seventh. Quick review of the project schedule. We've made it here to July the seventeenth with a modeling update. Our next scheduled meeting with the board is August seventh, and a workshop meeting. And then, again, targeting board approval on August twenty-first. Do we have any questions about the project schedule? Or the the next meeting, or anything else about the IRP?
Thank you. So on August seventh, that's when you all, well, we'll all discuss the potential integration of the comments that have come from the public into the plan?
Yes.
Okay. I think that was my only question.
Okay, one thing I'm I'm gonna be reaching out to Tom for the board to decide is depending on the amount of information we need to discuss that night, how long a time period does the board want to have? So Tom, just keep me honest, remind me, so we can have that conversation together.
Fifteen minutes?
All right. Is that it, Chuck?
That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. President, I will for this part of our agenda, turn it over to you so that and ask you to take us into public comments related to the IRP and any, any further comments that that has not been disclosed thus far.
Okay, we'll now open this section of the agenda for any public comments related to the IRP process. Comments may also be submitted by email to IRP at BPU dot com. Any of the written comments are due on or before August seventh. So I guess we just need to, is there anyone in the attendance that we would wish to address or make public comments on the IRP at this time? Give your name and and the address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Ty Gorman, two eight four three Parkwood Boulevard, six six one zero four. So this presentation definitely drives home the the recommendations Sierra Club made about annual updates to me. I think so many of the underlying assumptions of these scenarios are highly subject to changes that are not only more frequent in the market, but much more frequent in the regulations, much more frequent in available technology. I'd be really interested to see scenarios that that involved demand-side management, scaling up at different levels. The load calculation did seem reasonable, so if those calculations are on the load side, I would be happy to to get the details of that, which I guess brings me to the next request by Sierra Club to have these details of the inputs and assumptions be public to the largest extent possible. We always do hope that there's an open source RFP leading to the, the, the prices and the scenarios. But if not, whatever, whatever source was provided could be used to allow other organizations that might have an interest, Sierra Club or other folks throughout the the country who are interested in providing analysis on these types of engagements to, to make tweaks to you know, what if there was resilience in storage load shedding, different calculations that the SPP is working through in their policy and working groups? So I'd just love to get and usually in these processes, integrated resource plans, there's there's the presentation of the information in the model. But then there's also a long period of comment and reply and kind of back and forth from outside folks and the modeler and in this case, the board to, to work out these details and bring in other ideas. So that once the RP is presented, then there's usually several meetings or months after that where there's time for people to digest and contribute to it before approval. So I'd ask the board to consider some, like, I know there was a public that brings me maybe to the public meeting side of this. I think that a public hearing that really want, that really tries to involve participation and get people to send more comments into the BPU at IRP. Or the other way around. They, you know, just, just having a wonky presentation in a, in a setting like this doesn't necessarily get a robust reply, I think, from the public. Whereas bringing kind of the issues home and inviting response through different partners and meetings and mechanisms besides just the newsletter and the website will allow people to maybe envision what should be happening in their community, what they would like to see BPU look like in their community over the time planning horizon. And to bring that information into the utility as part of the IRP process. That's one of the suggestions nationally that I can, maybe I have provided them or maybe can provide again, kind of the, the best practice. Public engagement policies that are low, low-cost best practices for, for municipal utilities. That can really, I think, you know, bring this kind of thing home to folks, like, how, how does it affect me? How, could it affect my home? What kind of changes will I be seeing in my efficiency and my home health and my demand flexibility? That BPU can see a lot of value in. If there is a high-risk scenario that is, that comes to pass, that kind of demand flexibility engagement and foresight can really make the difference in having to raise prices or being able to lower prices since that of home efficiency, HVAC efficiency and expansion of the program that I know BPU is familiar with and, and has run on being able to directly control appliances in folks, in folks' homes and in commercial and industrial settings. That's the lowest-cost, best possible flexible energy source, and I'd love to see those assumptions in that scenario through this process. It looked to me that the the, the thumb was on the scale a little bit in these scenarios as far as retirements. Couldn't tell from the information provided. But usually in capacity expansion modeling, which I believe this was an open capacity expansion model. Usually there you, you let the model run to the maximum reliable affordability, given reliability constraints, and do not put the current resources in there as fixed variables. So that allows you to get the most affordable and, and flexible option given future scenarios and, and regulations. So I'd I'll get maybe feedback on whether that's happening or how it's happening. And, and, and that leads me to the regulations, which I think there are many regulations out there that are kind of on the bubble federally as far as will there or won't they be enforced completely on a six-to-ten-year time horizon? So having those assumptions clear in the model and, and transparent to the public would be really helpful for for, for me and anyone else, hopefully, who can check up on this, this work and the affordability and reliability assumptions. I think the, the, the only other thing I'll mention real quickly is the, the work, like the public engagement, having an education that's with peer learning groups has been so helpful for buy-in for I think the, the, the ten-person group that meets quarterly is, is, is a start on that road, I think. What we had originally promoted was especially for this planning process to have a number of people at the neighborhood level who were engaged in this be paid to participate and bring their neighborhood concerns to a long-term or to a medium-term to long-term planning process. And so just that, that can create expertise, create buy-in, create a community pathway to get concerns and interest into BPU and into the future of BPU. People feeling like they have ownership and, and like stake in, in BPU as their community utility. And I don't think you can really do that through just asking for people to spend a lot of their spare time trying to manage these types of rooms and, and, and education in this format. So I, I, I think I, I'd hope to see more opportunities. I think the next time's a workshop, which is closed, and then there's the presentation and approval, and that's the only input we get. Is that correct for public engagement? Am I right on that schedule? There's the August seventh, it's a closed session, and then the August twenty-first, that's a approval meeting. Is that accurate? Yeah, thanks. Right. Oh, there's an August fourteenth finalized. So is that also, and that's also a board session or a closed session? Looks like.
It was the fourteenth, August fourteenth. Is that a regular session or a work session? It doesn't.
It's not a meeting.
I believe that's work that Black and Beach is doing. I think the bottom of that timeline or board meetings on the top might be Black and Beach work, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah. Yeah. So to finish up the comments, transparency of everything that's going into this, is there any reason not to provide it? And I, even if it's can't be provided transparently publicly for some reason, organizations like ours who can, can attract or have resources to throw into a alternative scenarios free to y'all into the public, in addition, just for analysis, should be able to work directly with staff or, or Black and Beach in partnership. I think Black and Beach has done partnerships with consulting firms such as Synapse who can, who work often with different states and clean energy scenarios to provide alternative views. And is, could, can I keep asking questions? Is there a way for the board to provide that kind of collaboration or transparency of this? Of these inputs and assumptions?
I, hang on a second, Ty, and Chuck, you may want to come up. Andrew, I don't know who. You guys may want to come up to answer this, because my question is to you guys on this, and I know this is irregular, but we're in a comment period, so. So is there a level of confidentiality about the inputs that go into these assumptions for the various scenarios that couldn't be provided publicly?
There are a number of inputs provided actually by BPU to Black and Beach. Detailed operating characteristics of the BPU power plants, market-sensitive data. That would have to be certainly considered as potentially confidential. That's a, that's a BPU decision to make. Certainly, in our collaboration with the BPU staff, Black and Beach could provide all the inputs to the Model Two BPU, who could then evaluate what is and what is not sensitive to BPU operations.
Okay, so Ty, there's your answer.
Yeah, I mean, thank you. Maybe a follow-up, usually in these scenarios. I mean, that's often the case, the two ways to address it are blanking out the data that is sensitive and bucketing it. So, you know, having criteria and not be directly to a particular characteristic of where you got the prices or where you got the operating characteristics, but to have it be generalized, if that's too labor-intensive, an NDA with the organization that's able to provide these, the next, usually the next scenario, right? Is there anything? Would that be possible under those scenarios? Okay. Thank you.
We're taking that on consideration. I need to turn my mic on.
And just to, if I could, address one of your questions earlier. Just to address one of your questions or comments earlier about the potential for existing resources to retire within a capacity expansion model. Within our base case and with all the cases examined here, starting in twenty twenty-eight, all thermal resources are given the option to retire within the model. So they are not a fixed assumption, the model can, if it feels a, a new resource, new construction is more cost-effective or better for the system than to continue operating an existing resource. It can retire that resource and, and, and build a new facility.
After twenty twenty-eight, is that what you said?
Yes.
All right. Is the annual update part of this? Is that something that can be addressed in, in subsequent sessions after this IRP process is over?
That'd be a conversation with the board on work, where.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure there wasn't a policy in place that would answering that. Okay. Thank you. And, and for the, for the process side, should I address that later or for any possible changes or updates or elongations of the public engagement or process past the August twenty-first deadline or approval?
Can you restate that, Ty? I'm not sure I understand.
Is there any process that we take here tonight or in a future meeting that would make it possible to open up the discussion of the IRP further than August 21st?
I think we discussed that at one at one point in time, so we're just gonna we're playing it by ear. Yeah, we have discussed if we're not ready to make you know, a decision or take action on that date, we've discussed moving it on out and taking more time.
Okay. If if, you know, in all the other IRP processes I'm involved in, there's an intervention process for folks like Sierra Club to jump in. And then there's an elongated comment period. So you have ahead of time that people wanted to be involved and be in the process, and then you'd have a back and forth for some months if and we have Sierra Club has the capacity to engage in that. And I think there's some need for it on the public side as well. So I would just present that for your consideration as you play it by ear, hopefully for the next meeting.
You know, along those lines, is is there a reason that we we don't approach the IRP similar to how we approach a rate hearing? And I have quotes around hearing because what we had did not resemble a hearing, but it was our effort to. So I do. Is there a reason we don't do it that way?
I guess I'm not sure what what you're asking because it is a process that follows similar to the rate hearing process. We hire consultants, we go through, evaluate on the rate case size. Here's what our needs are. Here's revenue requirements and everything to meet all of our future objectives. On this side, we involve involve the consultant. We've gone through and taken a look at our generation, assess what life may be potentially still left in there. Looked at all the environmental things that we may be confronted with now and in the future. We've also have gone through all the planning phases or where the market may take and everything, and we and we've also opened this up for the public.
Yeah, and and I think I think the opening up of the public and the way we're doing this engagement. To me, it it's and I understand that there's not going to be a ton of people from the public who are going to be engaged with this, right? I see that we sent something out to our 20 largest, you know, customers. And, you know, clearly, you know, the Sierra Club, who also participated in in the rate hearing, you know, is 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 trying to collaborate and participate in this, and I think you guys have accommodated to some extent, but we're collaborating in, you know, the middle of July. And we're expecting approval from this board on August 21st. And so I think just from a from a timeline perspective, you know, to me, you know, so whoever the interveners want to be, if it's Sierra Club or others from the public, industrial customers, whatever, I mean, that they have an opportunity to collaborate, you know, with staff and, you know, perhaps even Black and Beach earlier on in the process. I mean, I mean, that's that's I think what I'm hearing from you, Ty. And and honestly, it it makes sense to me because I feel I feel like what I heard at the rate hearing last July or last June, I don't remember June, I think it was June. You know, is that there would be an opportunity, you know, for for the public to sort of collaborate on this? And yes, we're giving the public an opportunity to comment on this, but I'm I'm not sure, you know, collaboration in the true spirit of that word is is sort of what's occurring. And so that, I mean, I just didn't know we handled this differently for for other reasons or or not.
Well, I I would approach it this way. Okay. And here's the stark difference between the two. One is when we go through a cost of service rate proposal, we're asking the board to make definite decisions about where rates are and how we're going to configure those rates, who's going to be impacted. And those are definite, those are decisions the board are making. That's going to be those rates that that year and any following year that's in that cost of service and and in that rate increase proposal. Here, we're just looking at a set of plans as to here's how we see the world now, and here's all the assumptions we're making about the future. And we're saying, we're saying we're not asking the board to make any financial decisions or any other firm commitments on where we go with this. This is just a set of set of plans based on here. Here's how we see the future may be unfolding with the number of scenarios that could play out in different directions. Okay, so there there is a huge difference between the cost of service rate process and us developing a set of plans that is subject to change year after year, budget after budget, board after board, as the board changes, as the general manager change changes. It's just a set of plan that gets updated going forward.
When we ask for ask for comments, when they come in, we asked to see, we asked this evening at for comments to be emailed or written. When they come in, what happens to them? Who looks at them? Do they do? Does somebody actually look at those comments that come in? Do they act on them? Do they make some kind of what?
You talking about comments related to the IRP?
I'm we're we asked, yeah, the IRP for comments. I think Sierra Club, they they've made some they made some comments earlier. Did somebody look at those comments that came in from the Sierra Club and and take any?
Not only not only did we look at them, we presented them tonight to the board. So you you in in the presentation we gave you, we said, here's the comments that the Sierra Club has presented to us.
Yeah, I'll say we we presented or that was, you know, a kind of a rehashing of what we had done before, but we did send in 40 some pages of comments and it was a fair representation and three bullet points of the highlights of those. But I think the critique that I'm hearing here is what we what could have been provided is if if we had seen once you see the report, then you can begin developing critiques of the assumptions of that report that address the worldview that BPU can can hold. And so I would I would say if if there's not time for there to be a back and forth over a period of months after the report has been shared and hopefully with more detail with the report shared that is then critiqued by other folks. And then all those at the end, multiple scenarios presented to the board for decision. I mean, if I think that's the way it needs to be done. If it doesn't need to be done right now in a single process, then I would ask, what's the point of what does it mean for the board to approve this plan?
If I want to go back to the comment section because what three, two years ago, the board made a decision that it wants to broadcast our board meetings using Zoom to the public. So all this conversation today is recorded. It's going to be on our website. It's for everybody to see here. It's for us to reference, go back to. This is far different than anything we've ever done in the past. And it is a more open process to where we're capturing exactly what you're asking for without you sending any emails in. Okay?
In my eagerness to to hold all this in my head and reply, I failed to say this is so much better than it has been before. And thank you for all the improvements you've made. But I just am trying to grapple with the enormity of the task and the shortness of the timeline.
And and we intend to take everything that you're suggesting tonight, try to get answers, collect it and provide those answers back to the board based on what you're presenting tonight in addition to what you've already sent in through emails. Okay, so we've got the recordings. It's actually better, you know, because we can there's there's dialogue back and forth between you and us. So we we can further understand, better clarify what you're asking. And we can take better action and answer questions more accurately.
Thank you. And let me share briefly what I could do at this point, now having something to present to national experts and a budget with which to work in this community, I could just just take the broad strokes that are here and get a overlying critique by national experts on. I'll tell you right now, some of the assumptions that had to have gone into from even from just a regulations point of view, a lack of generation retirement of these oil and and coal units through 2038. There would be some substantive critiques and scenarios that should be looked at where that is not possible to keep those open through 2038. And economically through FERC 2222 and 1920 regulations that have come down that require a much more substantive demand side management and transmission planning process that is regionally focused and broad based. And I think those are requirements that would be likely to to come down in the near future, but we could address that in an annual update. And if we wanted to keep this process open and provide those kind of high level comments this year, and then we could kind of reorient that that budget and come back at the end of this year with very detailed collaborative analysis to provided free of costs to BPU and the and the customers to to bring a more holistic view of what these regulations and markets sensitivities could be and would be happy to and love to work with with Black and Beach or just from the data Black and Beach could could dump on us with an NBA. How whatever works, but so I think just for for your, since you're playing it by ear, just wanted to give some some ideas there. I think what's one option being to elongate the process, have a set of critiques, comments and responses similar to what the KCC might do over a, you know, three month period or so. And another option to be to kind of annual update and have this discussion outside of this process later on in the year.
Any other comments?
I think that was a very generous and substantive comment from me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There was a part of part of the answer, and then we'll get we'll get all this to the board. The party answer, we did meet with you on some of these first quarters last year, and you know, as well as we do, the BP is not regulated under these. We are continuing to keep an eye on it. Okay. And we also are listening to our large industrial customers regarding all of these matters. So but we're not required to do any of this, but there is an interest in helping our customers and helping our community. So thank you.
That was.
We will get those answers to the board.
Okay, SPP is covered by FERC. You're not responsible with the KCC, but the FERC rules should apply to municipals.
You generate a certain amount of power. Okay.
Right, right. Depends on, yeah.
Sure.
Depends on, yeah. Is there anybody else in the in attendance that wants to make comments? Is there anybody online? Then I would like to, I think we should go ahead and close the comment section.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to thank Mr. Gorman for coming and expressing his comments tonight and desires to continue to dialogue with us. So thank you. So next is part of a continuation of what we spoke about. Patrice, if you can come up. Patrice. And I've asked Patrice to be brief with this environmental I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ingrid, I'm sorry. I've got I've got both of you on the agenda.
Yeah, you're next. You're next. Just stay ready.
Ingrid, I would, and I've asked I've asked Ingrid to be brief, but also to give you a set of slides that is that is a lead behind really for a lot of information and things that we're continuing to track. So Ingrid, if you could be brief, be sensitive to the time we've been here tonight already.
Yeah, for the sake of time, I am going to kind of move through this a little bit. And first of all, good evening and thank you for allowing me to present to you all. So I do plan just to go fairly quickly for the sake of time and highlight some of the important information here. If the board has any other questions at any point with some of the details in the presentation, please feel free to email me. So I'm going to start with a recent ruling that just happened here not too long ago, a few weeks ago, that is impacting and has the potential to impact future regulations. And that is when the Supreme Court overturned what we reference as a Chevron deference. So what that is, is that I think in 1984, longstanding legal doctrine that required difference to permissible permissible agency interpretations of the statutes that those agencies write. So for me in the environmental world, that would be the EPA. So if they issue a regulation, historically with the Chevron deference, they've been able to have that input into that regulation. However, with the Administrative Procedures Act, the Supreme Court determined that courts use their independent judgment rather than just deferring to these agencies that actually wrote the regulation. So that's I mentioning that because that is a recent change in the regulatory world, not just for EPA regulations, but in general. So in 2024, it's actually a very big year for us when it comes to the EPA. We've got potential changes in the presidential administration, as many of you are aware. The Congressional Review Act. So as of after May 22nd, 2024, Congress can roll back any regulation published after that date. You know, Biden is creating his environmental legacy. And with that, we had a big release of four major regulations in on April 25th of 2024 that impact the power sector. That first rule I'll mention is the coal combustion residuals rule. That's the legacy rule of that portion. We reference that as a CCR rule. A second one was the steam electric power effluent guidelines. We referenced that as ELGs. And the new source performance standards and emission guidelines for greenhouse gas emissions or the green GHG rule. And the mercury air toxins rule, which is we reference as the MATS rule. This is a quick little slide I thought I'd throw in because that's my life. So we have, this is based on the fall EPA agenda in 2023. EPA just came out with their spring 2024 agenda, so this does not include any regulations that have been maybe updated or newer on this timeline that you can see here. Mostly, a lot of these are are related to air regulations. So I I mentioned the regulations already. I'm going to skip through because there are some of these that because of good planning on BPU's part, the environmental department, working with operations and upper management, we have already complied with some recent rules that have have been released. And one of those is the MATS RTR standard. So if you all recall, back in 2015, we instituted and implemented their quality controls for our near main creek power station. And with that, we are within the limits of the new regulation, which they lower that standard. So this one goes away. There's also the National Ambient Air Quality Standard, we call NACS for particulate matter. That doesn't impact us currently because it's not within our our purview here within the Kansas City area currently. And another one that we could wipe off is the affluent guidelines that has to do with water and and discharge from from legacy or from coal combustion residuals, basically. So if you recall, as part of our bottom ash conversion, when we closed one of our surface impoundments, that went away and we no longer have those discharges. We're a dry system. So the first rule I'm going to talk about real quick is the greenhouse gas rule, right? This is related to carbon pollution standards or or CO2, most people are familiar with. So this is the third iteration of this rule. If you all remember back under Obama, he came out with the Clean Power Plan that was stayed after several years. Under the Trump era, we had the Affordable Clean Energy Rule. We called it the ACE Rule. That also was stayed. This proposed or this rule that is currently out existing, right? Impacts our near main creek power station and any new combustion turbine that we would, if we potentially build out new combustion turbines, those two would be regulated. So this was final May 9th, 2024. One of the difficulties on an administrative side is that these state plans are due within 24 months of the effective date of the guideline, which was July 8th of 2024. So similar to all the other greenhouse gas rules, we'll be working with KDHE to start developing these plans. There's a lot of litigation over this rule already. And similarly with the Chevron difference case in the Supreme Court, we'll we'll see if this gets stayed or not. But the problem with this timeline and state plans is is in part of the comments that we provided and the state provided is they need about 12 to 18 months administratively to get this through and and into law on the on this Kansas side. So it's a very short timeline. I already mentioned that this applies to our near main creek power station and any new build. and any new build out of combustion turbines. So within this regulation, there's three subcategories that a utility has to choose from. These are fairly important. The first one is exempt coal is how they define it. So that's when a unit will decide to retire before January 1 of 2032. So they can operate as is, but they have to have to commit to that retirement date. And that would be a federally enforceable cease operation date that would be in the state plans going forward. The second would be option would be the mid medium term, which allows a coal-fired unit to operate on or after January 1, 2032, but they committed to seizing operation before January 1 of 2039. With this, the best system of emission reduction, they are requiring coal units to co-fire natural gas 40% of the unit's annual heat input. And on top of that, there's an additional 16% reduction in our emission rates that we would have to meet. The compliance date for this is by January 1 of 2030. So even though you plan to operate beyond 2032, the compliance date is two years prior to that. The last option they give us is a, it's called long term, which allows a coal unit to operate on or after January 1 of 2039. So this is, given though where the regulations come in. So we have the best system of emission reductions for this calls for 90% of carbon capture on a coal-fired unit of CO2. So EPA references carbon capture sequestration. The emission rate reduction would have to be an 88.4 emission rate reduction. They give you two extra years to do this. So that's compliance date is January 1 of 2032. This is one of the most critical and debatable portions of the proposed rule because there is not a well-proven technology for carbon capture sequestration on any coal-fired power plant. There are some that have 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 it and demonstrated, but they're not able to achieve 90% capture. We also are looking ahead at some of the regulations or infrastructure that needs to be built out. So for instance, Nierman Creek Power Station, in order for us to have a sequestration of carbon capture, we'd have to go well beyond Topeka, and that would have to be piped to Topeka, which there is no currently no infrastructure in place for that. There are other implications with the rule. We call it NSR, New Source Review. Some of that is when you start changing a coal-fired unit, they're permitted as such. They operate as such. Well, you're changing their operations, you're changing their physical, making it whatever carbon, if it's capture, carbon capture, or if it's natural gas. So that's a whole nother permitting exercise that goes through the state and best system of available, you know, compliance for that. So another few other things that EPA didn't really acknowledge too much in this regulation is that if you do decide to go the hydrogen path, there are increases in NOCs, right? So that's also an environmental concern. Co-firing natural gas, you'll get carbon monoxide increases. So if you are converting or combusting 40% natural gas. Lastly, carbon capture sequestration is high energy on a power plant. So you're looking at a 25 to 40% increase energy production from that unit. Real quickly, I'll talk a little bit about a whole nother regulation. That's the cross-state air pollution rule. That is under the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, and that includes ozone as part of this rule. You know, states are EPA and states have to meet, puts out this EPA puts out the standards. States have to meet those standards. And part of the cross-state air pollution rule is, is those emissions migrating from one state to another state. And they look at that. There's also currently we're we're having allowance trading programs that we can do. Some of the 23 or so states last year were under a FIP from the Federal Implementation Plan from the government, from EPA, and ratcheted down their allowances and so forth. So as a result of that, Kansas has now been implicated implicated in the supplemental of that Good Neighbor Plan, and this is a very recent happening. So we're working with other Kansas utilities. The Kansas plan was actually submitted by KDHE and to EPA in 2022, and it was approved. So but EPA came back and proposed to partially approve and partially disapprove that plan. So now we're kind of back to the drawing board, looking at potentially a federal implementation plan. And these allowances and restrictions, you know, look at operating our SCR a little bit more at Nierman potentially. And this would begin in 2025, which is a very shortly time. I'm not gonna go into too much of the the legal issues here and timelines, but if you all review that and have questions and like to discuss, happy to do that. The Supreme Court did after the Chevron deference ruling. A few days later, came out and disapproved or stayed, excuse me, the Good Neighbor Plan, which was had to do with those other remaining states on the East Coast, North, Northeast for the most part. And so Kansas is in a unique position. We've met with, the Kansas Utilities has met with Attorney General and some others, the KDHE and others about this regulation. And so we, you know, EPA has to formally disapprove our plan for us to meet and be stayed under this this ruling here from the Supreme Court, or they could simply leave it alone. And we have to move forward with potentially other emission restrictions. So regional haze, this is something that impacts national parks and wilderness areas. It's another one of those that are ambient air quality standards. And we have turned in our plan, meaning KDHE in Kansas back in 21. So as a result of this, you know, KDHE just determined that there's no federal land management agencies. So no parks and recreation areas, no national parks, no wilderness areas, and no other states that came back to Kansas and were concerned. So Kansas basically said, you know, we should not have to be required to do what we call a four factor analysis, which is timely and very costly. Because we're already in good standing when we had no other issues. It's a lot more detailed than that. Again, this is a very highlight level summary. So recently, however, though, EPA has now come back and said, we're gonna disapprove you, Kansas, your SIP for this because you didn't do this four factor analysis on two of your sources. So we're working through that currently now. And last rule, trying to hurry so everybody has an evening, is what we call again the CCR legacy rule. This is an interesting one. This came back out and originally in April of 2015. It's gone through many, many iterations and legal challenges. This legacy rule was just released here in 24. And so if you recall, we closed our surface empowerment and a couple of our landfills. Well, this rule basically, again, this has to do with all of the like flash, bottom ash, flue gas sulfurization, those kind of things that we we combust coal, we get those byproducts. So it has to do with those landfills historically and how that's managed and water issues, groundwater issues. Well, this legacy rule basically brings in those closed landfills that were initially exempt. And so we now have to meet a whole handful of regulatory requirements related to that. Mostly, what we've already started working on is what we call a facility evaluation report. So that will be for Quandero Power Station and our our Nierman Power Station. The final rule did shorten some of the timeline or extend, excuse me, some of the timelines. We had initially zero to three months on some of these to have it up on our website. And now we're we're looking at closer to 15 months for some of the initial proposed rules. So.
So I would ask the board to, I mean, this is something represented at a high level. There's a lot of leave behind here. If you have questions, I can bring Ingrid back to the next board meeting, give you guys time to take a look at it. Certainly, we can go through that. Then provide those answers at that time unless you want to consider spending more time on this.
Oh, first of all, that's information overload. So there's no way I could spend time on it right now. I mean, it's not, and it's a, you know, it's obviously an action-packed presentation.
Right.
And from my perspective, I'm sorry that that we we put you in this small window in a regular session.
No, it's okay. I mean, I'm glad we had Ty's input and this is what we need to do.
No, right.
To come back and.
But but I, I mean, I guess from my perspective, I would like to be able to see the board maybe tackle this in a work session where, you know, we have a little bit more interactive because there's just so much here. And I gotta be honest with you, I'm not real bright, Ingrid. So if you could break this up into a couple of things, I mean, this is, this is a lot. I mean, it's incredibly informational. So thank you. But there's, there's just a lot that, you know, I don't, I don't understand the impact of some things. I mean, I understand regulations bad. No, it's not, but but it is. I get it. And it's costly and all the things. But you know, what the true impact to like BPU is not like, you know what I mean?
Right, right. And I'm happy to do that.
And I know you can.
It is information-packed. And so, yeah, I'm happy to elaborate more specifically.
And also, my question had to do with, are we providing any type of financial incentive for comply complying with regulations, you know? Or are they just penalties for not complying?
So, no, the only financial incentive was really for industry, not necessarily us to. So the Biden Agency came out with the IRA, right, to build infrastructure. You get tax credits to build pipelines and not only for hydrogen, but for carbon. And they're relying on those credits, those tax credits for this infrastructure to be built out. So that infrastructure really has to start, and I'm talking right now about the greenhouse gas rule in 2025, that that build out really needs to start happening here next year in order for a utility even think about trying to meet this because you're looking at engineering changes to a power plant that are a large undertaking, right? You're taking, you're changing your whole fuel source at the end of it if you want to operate past that 2039 day. So, so we don't know. To answer your question, we do not get any funds necessarily directly for this implementation.
So I know that there's a lot packed in here. Sorry for the for the information overload. But, you know, I think it's trying to fit this conversation in. And I know, and there was never any expectation on on you guys being able to digest all of this at one time. Okay. But I do, I do want to, did want it to have it, especially as we were talking about the IRP and other things because there is some components to that that this direct impacts. Okay. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to put this together, leave it for you in your spare time, spare moments, if you can look at it. I mean, we'll certainly come back and go deeper into this later. But there's still a lot of, a lot of things we need to talk to the board about as we go forward over the next few weeks. So it's trying to find time to allow all that conversation to take place. So.
And I do want to add on to what Bill was saying and maybe some of what Ty was trying to insinuate. There are a lot of these regulations. And of course, when you're looking at these regulations, especially with an IRP or anything else, you know, you're looking to at the worst case, some of the other regulations knocked off a different regulation. So you don't need to certainly sit and evaluate that particular, right? So it's a lot more intricate than perhaps some things were implied earlier. And we're definitely doing our due diligence when it comes to the regulatory side with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll try to get through the rest of this fairly quickly unless the board wants to have further conversation or may want to delay taking any action on it. It's certainly up to you. Patrice, if you can come up. They got two economic development fund requests, proposals that we have met and talked to the board about. So there's two resolutions. Prepare it if you want to take action or just let us know what your pleasure is.
Well, we've lost two of our board members. So I don't know if you want to proceed. It is gonna require a vote.
We should proceed with either of these that we require a vote. I would suggest a separate room on each item. And I would also note that there was people came from the the board discussed different amounts.
And during that discussion, all board members were present. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That was my.
My memory is not that good.
Yeah, I was, I was just clarifying. It was a critical question.
Thank you. Hang on one second, Patrice. So, and I know that we've asked this question before, and I know that it seems maybe a tad gray. But if if there are four of us and there's a majority of the four of us that approve, do we do we move it forward? How would we do?
It takes four. It takes.
Oh, so it'll take, it'll still take of the total majority. Got it.
Not of the majority present. So if you think that you need to hold it over, that's also an option. But if you're ready to move forward.
Ready.
I'm ready. I think we're ready to move forward. The committee really went over these. We made our recommendations to the full, full board, the full board. Had an opportunity to have input and and discuss it. And so I think we're ready to move forward. So I would entertain a motion on resolution 5302, which is the YLOFs economic proposal.
I approve the, I recommend the, well, I move. Thank you. I move to approve the resolution 5302 YLOFs.
Ms. Rosa, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gonzalez. Oh, she's Gremmon.
Yes.
Oh, Wakes.
Yes.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
All right. Same with the resolution 5303, which is the pertains to the.
Cottage in Village West.
Cottage, the cottages at Village West.
I move adoption of resolution number 5303.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Zero.
Is the motion to approve it with the corrected.
Yes, as corrected.
Second.
Thank you for catching that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gremmon.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Patrice. Mr. President and Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Just as on the heels of that one right there, I would just like to offer my comments to the board that these, these, these economic development requests are another example of something that possibly could be put on a consent agenda in the future because it does go through committee and then the full board. Still to be voted on via consent agenda. I just want to throw that out there. I'm probably gonna say the same thing after the transfer of funds. So.
I'll just stand. I'm glad that you brought it up. So that was the question I had. Thank you.
I'm reading your mind.
Thank you. Last dong, not dong, I'll ask. I am having one of those moments, Mr. President. Don, if you could please.
Thanks, Bill, and board. So the request here in front of you is to transfer $250,000 from one of our projects in electric production to another project. This overall does not increase our total capital budget. The project that we're transferring funds from was the CDS reactor project. This project is complete for the most part, was done during the outage. We, after inspection of the both CDS vessels, we found, you know, we planned for worst case scenario, ended up finding that the one vessel was not as in bad a shape as the other one. And so we did come under budget on that project and in an under budget in amount exceeding this 250,000. So we're proposing. So we're proposing to move this to the SCR project. The SCR project is a two-year project. This year is for purchase of materials. And it'll be a down payment for catalysts. We need to order, need to order it this year to have it available for next year for the spring outage. The catalyst is something we look at every year. We have a company do a analysis on it. And they they provide us with basically a catalyst plan for the next several years. How many layers to replace, if any, what years to replace them in. So their latest recommendation is to replace two layers next year, which is an increase from the from their latest plan. And so that has, that'll have that project increasing in budget from both this year and next year. But obviously, for next year's budget, we'll, we'll propose that during the round of capital budgeting. So.
So to recap, Don, if I may, this is a budget transfer within the same department of money that was already been approved in the budget by this, by the board.
Correct.
Thank you. I move that we approve this budget transfer.
Wait a second. It moved inside of the roll call.
Roll call, Greniman.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Haley, aye.
Oh, Haley. Sorry, Haley.
We can't keep up if you're here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Board. So next one is sent you information on, on a request from the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Board did approve an economic development fund request that they had made several months ago, and they don't quite meet the guidelines for that policy. But I did put in, I did talk to the board about a recommendation that I would have supporting their request on on making some in-kind donations that really does not really impact BPU that much. It's just basically providing BPU labor. It's the majority thing there. So if you want me to go further, if not, then I would ask the board to consider requesting that, requesting approval or request approval on that request. And, Mr. President, I guess I will turn it over to you because I'm starting to stumble again. Okay. Is there any discussion on?
No, this is Rose. I move to approve the recommendation to do an in-kind contribution to the downtown KCKCC campus project and also to waive the all-electric requirement as a part of the original allocation that we did under the Economic Development Fund.
Second.
Two fifty, which has previously been allocated from the Economic Development Fund.
As the line item costs for the refund for all-electric. But the differences, have they expressed, if you know, the downtown campus, which I'm wildly and enthusiastically supportive of. But can we know what that difference is? I don't know what else.
What their differences are, like what the ROI is? Is that what you were looking for?
The other option. What else would they have?
They have a natural gas option. Or heat.
Laboratories. They've got other things where they need gas here.
I mean, so it, you know, it's the construction automation.
Right.
Is their focus of that campus. I think you know that, Senator. I mean.
To the extent that it is, but I don't know if it's going to make that big, bigger, bigger difference in the refund anyway for the minimum amount that they're going to use, with the amount that they'd use of that electric.
Well, I'm not an engineer, and I did not construct nor plan that campus, but.
Point of order. Yeah. Yeah, we've had a motion and a second. Roll call.
And we had discussion on the motion, which traditionally, problemenary is how it's done, Mr. President, that there is discussion on any motion that's been moved and seconded. And I appreciate the indulgence of the of the discussion on the motion before us. And I would call the, then call the question.
Roll call, Greniman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Board. And I will spare you, I will give your time back to you by not having any miscellaneous comments. Okay, we're now to the public comments on any of this evening's agenda items. Is there anyone present who wants to make a comment on any of the agenda items, this evening's agenda items? Is there anyone online with their hand raised? Okay, then we will close this public comments section and go to board comments. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be briefed this evening because I've talked throughout this entire meeting. But you know, again, I want to thank the staff and, you know, our consultants at Black and Beach for all of the effort y'all have put into the IRP. I know that this is an extremely long and tedious process and you know, just, just appreciate all the work on that. Ingrid, I kind of, you know, hit on it while you were up there. This is, this is really meaty stuff and it's important. And I'm sorry we had to, you know, shorten it a little bit tonight, but I hope that we do have an opportunity as a board to take this, some of this stuff up more in depth in the future. And good luck figuring out if, how Chevron's going to apply. And, and or or not apply, I guess that's the case maybe. Yeah. And, and so and obviously want to thank the, my fellow board members for, you know, the effort we put into the work session tonight to, to try to get to you know, a decision on picking an outside search firm for the general manager replacement. So thank you guys for that. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I just want to thank the tremendous public comments that we had tonight. I felt like this was one of our most engaged meetings and certainly the work of the board benefits from all of the input we can get. So my thanks to everyone who made their voice heard on behalf of themselves or their community. I echo Rose's comments on the great staff work and appreciate the work of Black and Beach on the IRP. I would flag as we're considering how long to set that work, next work session as we look at the IRP that we might want to reserve a few minutes for discussion of looking at the timeline as it currently exists and, you know, some of that flexibility that we've spoken about within there. If it makes sense to carve out a small space for once there is sort of an approved draft, that there might be an opportunity for feedback on that more finalized version before we get to full approval. But
We can make a note of that.
Yes.
Otherwise, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you to Black and Beach, to Ty. I really, I'm concerned about the passion you have for the, the desire for more public input. And as you see, there's been many efforts made to have public engagement in many things. And I wish in Wyandotte County, it was, it was such that we could even move to where we have more community engagement in a lot of things. And the incentive that, that Sierra Club provides by paying individuals to, to be a part, and certainly it's, I think it's worthy when you consider the time that people spend, particularly when they're single-parent homes, having to come to an event after hours, after working hours. It does put a lot of strain on the family. So I admire those efforts and hopefully there's something that we can duplicate to get more community involvement. But we need to see it all the way around. I, I cringe at the fact that we don't even have you know, a good electorate. I mean, when you consider the, the number of people, the percentage of people that actually vote, it breaks my heart. But I want to thank my fellow board members and certainly want to publicly say to Mr. Haley, it was no disrespect in calling the question because I just felt that that we'd move beyond discussion and, and it gone into a different direction. But again, certainly as we look to find a replacement for Mr. Johnson, and we're talking more about that now, it's becoming more surreal. And so we, I hope that we can continue to move forward and make the best decisions for the citizens of Wyandotte County. Thank you.
Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too want to thank Mr. Gorman, who's still with us in Black and Beach and Abstentia and Ms. Ingrid for the presentations tonight that we covered. Most informative and a good, robust discussion, the pros and cons of what's before us as we look at the RRPs and what's happening in the, in the industry as a whole, and certainly specifically to us, whether it's through FERC or through other some local, if not public concerns that could be expressed. It's extremely educational, much appreciated. Would like to say that this has been a good roundtable discussion for those who are in the public who were here and brought that. I would like to renew the energy of direct access for customer service that might be better enhanced and that I would hope the board would continue to work in concert with our manager and the staff to see if we can't open up those possibilities more, enhance those opportunities for our ratepayers to interact. Primarily, my push has been for the lobby to be a genuine access available, bilingual as well. Just want to renew that, Mr. President and members. And oh, took no, no, I always enjoy a robust discussion among us. I just wanted to, if there are some legitimate questions on any motion that I'm going to be asked to vote on, I certainly want to clear my mind and have a clear understanding of if there are some lingering questions prior to voting on a particular motion, which I will always opt to do and always encourage each of us to do from, from that standpoint. Wish you all the best. Thank you again, Mr. President, General Manager, fellow members.
My comments will be very brief. I just wanted to also, as all the other board members have, acknowledge everyone that was here this evening and the input that we've received. It's always, it's always welcome. So that's my comments. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. Roll call.
Roll call, Greniman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.